Seven o'clock, I'd like to call a meeting to order. I'd like everyone at least rise and join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Jim Conback?
Here.
Steve Nelson?
Here.
Dan Shirewell?
Here.
Janie Davy? Here. Michael Duda? Eric Jones?
Present.
Kristen Ren?
Here.
Mom is present.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
Agreed.
Would be seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Would be seconded, roll call.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shirewell?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Conback?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, next item then is audience to visitors. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board on any particular issue? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, so we move on then to the next item. Communications, correspondence, informational items. Uh, there were some, uh, Luda newsletters and a very, uh, auspicious letter from, uh, our music department indicating how many of our students, um, qualified for, um, the state, uh, positions in, uh, the honors orchestra as well as the, uh, state orchestra, so, um, well done to them, we wish them all, uh, the best of luck and we thank them for efforts. Thank their parents for making sure they took their lessons, uh, and, uh, that they stuck with it, so, um, so that was some good news. Anything else? For, uh, letters, newsletters? FOIA requests. And if anyone wants to address those? I believe they were all responded to and received thus far. Okay. Um, committee reports.
Um, SEF orbiting is next Monday, so nothing new to update there. Um, planning and zoning did meet, we didn't meet through the holidays, but we did meet last night. And, uh, three action items, uh, the lesser of, of the two were, was related to just some updates in the UVO to more normalize structures outside of housing and fencing areas or side yards and backyards and corner lots. Um, so there's, you know, a little bit of minutia there, but, um, you know, how much free area you have between the slats and the thickets and that kind of stuff and how high that's going to be.
Minutia.
It's studying.
But important.
Yes.
All, all got, all got passed unanimously and then we had, uh, a petition for a, uh, third tattoo parlor, but it would have been in our, essentially our downtown district. And, um, it was a close vote. First one was actually relative to whether we wanted to allow them in general. So changed the UVO to allow them, right now they have to be out of that area and I believe on the second floor. Uh, and we have to vet, meet those requirements currently. And then the second one was actually, actually specific to the petition, uh, in the space that they were looking to go into. And, uh, they both failed by one vote. Yeah. So they were six, five, five, six, and so it was, and, and we had, I think, a full house, I don't think we were missing maybe one. So, yeah. Other than that, nothing, nothing major.
Any other committee reports? Okay then, we'll move along to, um, Assistant Superintendent for HR, Educational Programs Report.
Thanks Jim, uh, exciting to, uh, be here, uh, West, a lot of staff here, um, students who greeted us and
Yes.
helped us find our way down here if we needed it, so welcome, thank you for being here and staying for the meeting this evening. Exciting to be here with-
You're so part of the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. We have Emily, um, one of our new principals this year, Emily Waller, that's, uh, gonna lead this presentation with a lot of staff, that's gonna partake, um, with a focus on relationships and all the great things they're doing here at West, so thank you Emily. I adore you.
Thank you. First of all, welcome, we appreciate you all coming out tonight. Um, as Mr. Ren said, I do have some staff here, um, to help me present and to share. Um, our real focus of this presentation is on relationships, um, both with students and how we build those relationships here at West, um, with the kids that we have every day, but then also our relationships as a staff and the importance of staff connectedness, um, in order to really be the best educators that we can be for our students. So, um, wanna kick off by talking a little bit about our theme for the year. Um, West always has a theme, um, and coming in as a new principal, I met with the building leadership team shortly after I was hired this summer and we really talked about the theme of learning as an adventure. Part of why we landed on that theme is really helping students to understand that learning isn't something that with a fixed destination necessarily, but it's really a journey and much like traveling, which I know some people experience some frustration over the holidays, um, it can be frustrating at times, right? But all in all, the experiences that we have along the way are what really help us and shape us as people. So you can see our staff have on their passport to learning shirts that we all got at the beginning of the year. When we talk about student relationships, we really wanted to make sure that we kicked off the school year in the right way. Um, you know, research shows that when students feel connected to an adult at school, they're automatically going to perform better. Um, that positive relationship is so essential to moving learning forward. Um, and, you know, students are more likely to take risks in their learning when they feel a connection to a staff member and they're also, it can help, um, with any type of behavior things that come up as well. So as we move towards personalized learning as a district, um, we really wanna focus on those relationships because it is so essential to making sure that our students feel a connection to a staff member and to each other so that they can really take ownership in their learning. So when we kicked off the school year this year, we did a back to school scavenger hunt and that was really our rollout of the theme. Um, you can see our graphic to the passport up there, it's the same that's on, uh, staff shirts, but we gave every student a passport when they came in for back to school night. This is a really fun way for students to get to meet their teacher for this year and other staff member, members in the building. There's so many adults here that students interact with every day, so they got to get a stamp on their passport, a little paw print, um, to have that conversation and start building those connections so that when they came in on day one, they felt like there was people here that they knew and that they could be comfortable with. We also rolled out our Agents of West. West stands for We Earn Success Together. So this program, uh, we have our Safety Patrol Agents, two of who are here tonight. Lorelei and Katie, could you stand up please? So we have ten fifth graders that are our Safety Patrol members, so every morning, and girls, could you turn around and show the back of your vests too? Every morning they wear their vests, they greet students, they're stationed at ten different locations throughout the building and they're stationed there in the afternoon as well to help students leave. Uh, this really promotes students, again, creating those relationships amongst each other. So our fifth graders get to hand out our Wildcat Cash, which is like our currency here for being respectful, responsible and just demonstrating a commitment to excellence. We also have our school store, so once a month students get to shop, uh, at the school store. When I was presenting it to students, I asked them what type of items they would want to work hard for. So that was really fun, we had a shopping day right before winter break and then we'll have one again this month as well.
What kind of things did they wanna shop for?
Yeah, so fidgets are huge, poppets. We have keychains, um, made the mistake of offering lunch with me. Um, so now everyone is saving up for that, so that might make me go broke, but that's great, that's what we're looking for. Um, they also have, there's like little plush balls that they can get, bubbles, journals, notebooks, erasers, pencils, all sorts of things. Yeah. And then we also have our monthly team time and this is something that all elementaries are doing, um, but during our team time, we focus on the core value of the month. We do an activity together, um, our teams are multi-grade levels, so there's somebody from every grade level on every team throughout the building. And when we first set up our teams, we all came up with names that had something to do with an adventure or travel or a journey. Um, so for example, my team were the Amazon Jungle, um, and everyone has a different team name. So on this next slide, I have some pictures for you. This walk in someone else's shoes, um, something that most elementaries did this year, but really focusing on empathy. Um, they got to define empathy, what it means to them, and then make shoes that they wanted to. And then this is a picture of our Safety Patrol on the day that they were trained with their awesome vests that one of our staff members made for them. This is also our school store, so our school store is mobile so that it can go throughout the building and I can run from class to class with it. Uh, but our school store workers, just like our Safety Patrol workers, did have to apply for that position. They filled out an application where they got to talk about how they're responsible themselves, why they should be trusted with Wildcat Cash and why they should be selective. They also had to have a teacher recommendation, which was a huge part of the process, so that teachers had voice in who should be a part of our agents. Um, and then parent permission as well, so we really wanted to make sure that all stakeholders were on board with this. So there are two school store workers from every class at every grade level. So that was really fun to get to train kindergarteners on how to count money, um, and how to help other kids shop. All right, to talk a little bit more about relationships, we have our fourth grade team, Mrs. Katie Frill and my goal partner.
So we just wanted to share quick, just really quickly kinda how we developed relationships, um, as a fourth grade team. Um, Emily talked about how important it is for students to have a relationship with different adults in our building. And on our very first day of school, we actually start to switch classes. A lot of times in elementary school, teachers will have their teacher and they're with their teacher all day. Um, but we like to share our students, we find that, um, just like knowing the whole fourth grade team as teachers is super helpful for us. Um, and at West, we look at all of our students as our students, not my students. Um, so it's really nice that students are able to, uh, you know, kinda have a go-to person. If a student in Mrs. Frill's class maybe isn't having the best day, um, I might be able to help her, help her or him have a better day. Um, now, we started doing this because I taught all the math and Mrs. Frill taught all science and social studies. Um, but moving forward, we do this for special occasions, for example, we just had the Candy Can Olympics right before our holiday break where we switched classes and she had events in her room, I had events in my room. Um, we had, uh, actually we'll get to this in the read aloud next.
Um, so then just one of the things I wanted to add, so I teach all the science and social studies and with our teamwork element then, um, we try when we're in our science units, cause we do science, social studies kinda back and forth. Um, and when it's a science unit then on Fridays, we try and make sure that's a steam Friday. Um, so all the snowflakes, if you saw any of the snowflakes hanging from the ceiling, those were all student made. Um, fourth grade, fifth grade students made all of those and they're not as easy to make as you'd think. Um, so we also then make sure, we do a lot of read alouds, we make sure that's something that's a priority for, um, both Mr. Buckner and myself. Um, and we actually read the same book, so we start the year, every year with Harry Potter. Um, we just wrapped up, um, just before break with Wonder. Um, and all these books just create like really great discussions and we try and make sure like that we create relationships, um, of course with our students, but then for them to create connections with that text, with things that apply to their life, both in school and high school. Um, and then that can also form relationships between the students, you know, as they realize like, oh, I've been through this and somebody else has as well. And that's just an opportunity to create a friendship that maybe they didn't have.
Yeah, that opens up a lot of conversations between, uh, students, we do a lot of discussions with our read aloud too. Um, when the students, you know, are able to talk to one another, make connections with one another that maybe they didn't, didn't know before that read aloud. Um, so Mrs. Frill told us that we just read the book Wonder, it's about a boy, um, that's born, who's born with a facial deformity and he's going to school for the first time. Um, so this book's all about acceptance, um, overcoming challenges, um, in, in making new relationships, so, uh, in the book, there's a teacher named Mr. Brown who has a precept of the month, which is kinda like a motto of the month or a, or quote of the month. So when we finished the book, we celebrated by making this collaborative poster where each student picked a precept, some of them made up their own very nice quotes, um, some of them chose quotes that they read somewhere. Uh, for example, we have one, uh, you're not a loser until you quit, quit trying, which is a Mike Dick, Dick quote.
Um, pretend someone is a dark room, then lighten it up, that was a student written. Um, and then yours, you may think, you may think you're stronger alone, but you're a whole lot better with someone by your side. And that was a student written as well. Oh, shoot, oh, I forgot those were it. Um, these are actually both taken, um, that was a steam Friday. Um, the students had to create a paper chain, they were given no direction, excuse me. They were given no direction, they were given fourteen inches of tape and then one piece of paper and they had to make the longest chain that they could. And then this was a science experiment. So thank you.
So I also mentioned at the beginning that we would talk a little bit about what we've done here at West to really build our relationships as a staff. Um, when I was first hired, I grew up in DeKalb, sorry, but I didn't know the history that West has. And one of the biggest things that I heard repeatedly was the motto that West is Best. I'm sure many of you have heard that. And West really, the staff here really embodies that mindset. We come, we show up every day for kids and to support kids, but throughout the last couple of years, we know how difficult that has been and the toll that it's taken on us. So we really wanted to focus this year on connections with each other. So again, at the beginning of the year, we worked together to make collective resumes. So you can see how much experience each grade level has, different places that they've taught, but we really focused on the bottom part of the poster, which was adjectives that describe us as a team. So it was a really great way to kick off the school year again, just with that connection with people that we work with. We also worked, um, through some wind time with our students on sharing why they're thankful for their teachers. Um, you know, education can often be a thankless job and students don't always realize all the work that our staff puts in. And so I really challenged our students while their teachers were out of the room at a meeting to come up with everything that they're thankful for their teacher for, so that was really fun to see. And then we've also formed a really strong partnership with the DeKalb County ROE to work on staff wellness and collective care this year. So these are some more of the collective resumes from the beginning of the year. And then this picture over on the, um, left-hand side is a picture of a student writing why he's thankful for his teacher. Um, and then this picture over here was one of our activities that we did with the ROE where each direction, um, was something different about our personalities and the way that we work together as a PLC. And so we really got to take time to have conversations about that and how we show up for work, um, and the ways that we all work best together. And then to talk a little bit more about our, uh, staff care and collective care together, I have Mr. Drew Davy and Mrs. Jordi Holtz here to talk about our Sunshine Committee.
Uh, and like Michael and Katie got a chance to talk about staff, or excuse me, uh, well, staff and student, uh, connections. I get a chance to talk more, as Emily was saying, uh, about the staff to staff or faculty connection. And so this, this was a semi-organic, uh, idea and concept that was kind of brought, I guess it was kind of brought in from a, a teacher, Lisa Rubek, who had experienced this with another staff that she had worked with before. And it was such a great idea that she sent out some feelers and quite a few staff jumped on the idea like, uh, like that motto goes. I was not at West School, uh, I didn't grow up going to West School, but I always heard that as a student when I was a kid and even when I was at another school in the building, it was always West is Best, and now that I'm here, I really truly feel that. And so so many people jumped on board and I felt like I needed to join in too. Kind of the sort of thumbs, uh, kinda sticking out there. But if you have any staff members that are here, can you stand up or wave that are members of the, the Sunshine Committee? Um, there's a few of you are here, I know a little modest too, but, uh, this is a very giving and, and selfless group. So our, you can see that our mission statement is, I'm not gonna necessarily read it to you, but really, uh, we are trying to create a little bit more positivity and, and sunshine throughout the building, since we've gone through quite a bit, felt like a really dark time, so we thought that idea and that concept of light, lightness in a, at, at the end of a, of a dark, of a dark time. So we're very intentional about, um, extending the concept that our staff is very valued and that we are very much appreciated. So, uh, here's, here's kinda a really quick snapshot of what we, we've done in the last three months. We highlighted four different staff members and we kinda give staff shout-outs. Kinda talk about them, brag them up over the intercom so that students can hear that too, get these wonderful things and why our teachers are so valued. We've done things like, uh, play their favorite songs, we've, we've had, um, care packages stopped by with our decorated car. We even have our sunshine, uh, costume there. We've done positive post-its, if you could, uh, see with the head, actually that's gonna be the next one. We will see that in a minute, where we, we picked four staff members and then the whole day, we encouraged students and staff to just throw a bunch of post-its on their door, we have, you'll see, uh, Care Country's door was plastered with them and, and the staff that month. And a lot of really, really great just thankful messages about, uh, bigging them up really and making them feel really great about just why they're such an important part of the staff here at West. We've done things like room service and, uh, like I said, we played songs. Here's some other activities, aside from the four staff that were kinda highlighted in October and November and December, we've done, uh, fun activities like You've Been Loved, you might have heard of that, where kinda have a few traveling mugs and there's a few little goodies in each one of them, maybe put a positive note in there and the staff would send that secretly to different people throughout the building. We have Raze of Sunshine, it's kind of both, a, a bulletin board that's in, in our teacher's lounge and this is kind of an anonymous, uh, thank you, Mr. Buckner, for being such a swell guy, I know I was, uh, if you were walking out, if you didn't notice on your way in, uh, we thought this would be a fun idea, look who's been teaching you. So these are high school pictures of the staff and students can see this and they're trying to figure out, who's that, who's that? And it's pretty fun, uh, so that's a pretty cool thing to see. That builds a lot of connection between us as well as students too. Uh, there's Mrs. Franchelman with her whole door decorated with a lot of post-its, which is really fun. Here's Mrs. Schremer, uh, getting some room service, some of her favorite things. And we're just really looking forward to, we don't wanna give away any secrets, we try to do something unique for those four staff members each month. And so that's why we've kinda done a, a medley of different things, so for January, February, looking forward, we're really, uh, really excited to just continue this going. I've seen it really build people up this year, it's been a really, really happy and positive thing throughout our building, um, amongst the staff. And I think the kids really like to hear it too and hear a little bit more about their, their teachers and how much they're valued, and so, uh, Mrs. Holtz?
Yeah, so since we are the Raze of Sunshine, we're gonna share a little sunshine with you.
Well, thank you so much again for being here tonight and hearing a little bit about why we all believe that West is Best and why we're continuing to carry on that tradition. Uh, we think it's, like everyone has said, we think it's so incredibly important for our students to feel a connection every time they walk in the door and for our staff to feel that as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you for hosting us and thanks for the turnout. Uh, this is wonderful and, uh, I thought that was a great presentation as well. Um, I, I hope that you're feeling welcomed and mentored and, uh, you know, having gone to school somewhere else. No, we try not to. But, uh, but, uh, no, I hope that, uh, that you're getting the support that you need as a leader and a principal as well.
Very much so, we feel very fortunate to be part of this.
You know, if not, let us share and we'll, we'll make sure that that happens. So thank you very much.
It's all for my report, Jim.
Good report.
Where, where's the Care Bear outfit? Is that rotate?
No, no.
She fit the Care Bear up.
Well, you look great in it, so, nice job.
Next item then would be the superintendent's report.
Um, my report is not nearly as exciting as, uh, Mrs. Waller, Mrs. Waller's was, but, uh, it's the first meeting of the month, so I was trying to do a fo, a future focused, uh, item, this one had to do with partnerships, so, uh, I'll touch on this. Um, I'm actually gonna skip down to the bottom bullet point, here's where the idea really came from. Um, it's my third year, for the first year, year and a half, we're still dealing with pandemic and, and people really weren't getting out, there were organizations that weren't meeting and, um, really, this year I'm still running into and meeting people in the community for the first time. Um, kinda seems odd, this is, I was talking with, uh, Mrs. Waller about this, this is my first visit to West for a board meeting cause we haven't had a chance to do one in the last two years. So although the, the pandemic really seems like it's in the rearview mirror, um, you know, really wasn't all that long ago and, and now we're able to establish or rekindle partnerships with, within the community that we haven't had for a while, so, uh, that's really what, what brought this to the, to the forefront of my thinking at least. Um, just to go back to the top of the slide, throughout my career, I've always valued partnerships with other organizations. Person, group, organization works in or, or exists in isolation, really, I think we best serve the community when we're working together and partnering with local organizations, um, and individuals. So, uh, what are some of those benefits? Sharing resources, collaborative planning, uh, reducing the financial burden for Sycamore residents and so especially when tax and bodies work together and collaborate, we're saving resources for, for residents here in the community. Uh, and a lot of times we're filling a need, so, uh, in December, we heard from Portman Walls who talked about Spartan Food Pantry, we partner with other food pantries in the community that, that, you know, support residents and families here in the community. So just a couple of examples of, of how partnerships can benefit the community. Um, and of course, we're always looking to provide the best opportunities for students and their families and staff. So, I've got a couple of slides that start to list some of the partnerships we have in our community. And I started with the column on the far left. I had, I had all the way down to DeKalb County and I took that list from one of the slides that I use at the, um, State of the District's presentation in, in the fall, uh, that we partnered with the Education Foundation on. And really, when I put that slide together, I thought, well, this is a pretty good list of all the organizations that we partner with. And I picked Ms. Vins, uh, Brain this afternoon and we talked about, you know, what, what other organizations do we partner with? I came up with a couple others on my own, I made one or two other phone calls and came up with all of these other organizations that we partner with in the community. So I'm not gonna read all of those, I'll, I'll let you take a, a quick glance. And yet that list keeps going. So really, one of the things that I wanted to point out is that, you know, we always think that we partner with a handful of organizations and, you know, uh, community partners, but when I really started thinking about all of the individuals groups that, that support us or that we work with, that list gets pretty long. And this is only after a couple of phone calls. So a couple more emails or a couple other conversations and I'm positive that this list would have continued to grow. So you see some of the, the companies that we work with here in town, some of them, um, are vendors for us that come in and provide services or, or, uh, you know, we buy items from them. But even if they're a company that's listed on here, I didn't list them because we, we partner with them or they're vendors that we purchase items or services from, I listed them here because they donate or support the school district in one way or another. So you see Squidberg Electric on there, Weaver Construction is on there. Um, while we work with them as contractors and vendors, they're listed here because they give back to the school district or they partner with us on different projects. So, um, really was kind of amazed at all of the organizations that, that, uh, that we partner with and, and again, that's not even near uh, being an exhaustive list, so I thought that was pretty impressive. So in terms of future focused, uh, as we plan for the future, we'll continue to partner with, uh, individuals, groups and organizations. I think it's important that, that we as the school board continue and the school district continue to think about, um, how can we work together? How can we avoid unnecessary redundancy in services? Um, and as partners change, how can we make those connections? So some of those organizations that, that I listed, they've been partners with us for a long time. But as time goes on, some of them unfortunately during the pandemic, some of those organizations closed, closed their doors. We don't have the opportunity to work with them. Uh, and as time goes on, other organizations or groups open their doors. So, um, how can we continue to work with, with partners and, and as new ones come on board, how can we make those connections? Um, and how can we connect our partners with others? So even just in the last, um, couple of months, I had a meeting right before Christmas, um, with, um, representatives from the city, Kishawaki College, Kishawaki Education Consortium that provides CTE services for our students, um, as well as Mr. Carlson who attended there, and, and there were some new players in those groups. So just getting them together and being part of a conversation, uh, about how we serve our students. That particular conversation is how we can provide training for, um, the labor force here in Sycamore, but also in DeKalb County. So sometimes our role isn't just partnering with organizations, it's helping to make those connections. Again, I could have gone on with other, uh, opportunities that present themselves for us, but, um, really wanted to, to highlight partnerships and the importance of those for the school district. Um, and the need to, to focus on that as, as time goes on, so I think that's my last slide there. But I would open it up for, for comments or suggestions.
I guess just a comment, I would say is, the community partnerships, and it comes up in almost every meeting, so you're probably just gonna get lambasted for ignoring, you know, the twenty or three other organizations that you mind.
so you're probably just gonna get lambasted for ignoring, you know, the twenty or three other organizations that come to mind. No good deed. Uh but I'd say one of the most exciting things when I first joined the board, and I think it was a, a presentation from uh Divya Beal, who was at Drive Lock at the time, who was here giving a presentation on how uh the high school can collaborate with, with Drive Lock to, to help build their future workforce. And I know we've had similar discussions with uh Ideal Industries comes to mind, Upstaging comes to mind, and that, that really got me excited, that we were kinda helping these companies build their future workforce, while also providing different opportunities, whether that's career-based or education-based for our, our high school students. And then seeing how that's kinda trickling down, and then starting to get that same exposure at the middle and, and elementary school levels, is very exciting, so. Kudos to everybody who's been involved in all those opportunities. I can't wait to see where we can make it.
I think that example is a really good one. One of the things that we missed during the pandemic, and, and Mr. Ryan can might, might be able to speak to this a little bit better, was that partnership with the local businesses, where our students went out and and got some training, were able to walk through shops, or talk with individuals at those, at those businesses. During the pandemic, those organizations had to close their doors and, and didn't let us in as much. Um one of the things that Mr. Carlson was excited about this year was the opportunity to, to begin rebuilding those relationships. And I, I know we've already partnered with several organizations, businesses here in the community, where we're doing that same thing again um after having not been able to do that for a while. So uh I couldn't agree more. Uh Mr. Carlson, it's not one of the calls I made, because we wouldn't have had enough time to go over all the slides, and all the connections that he's got, but just unbelievable, the, the number and the opportunities like that. Oh, yeah.
This was Academy.
I, I hope you're not right at FFA. People I've asked have to believe people, and I'm sure we left them wrong.
Well, it's, I, I did think about trying to put an exhaustive list together, but we wouldn't have had the time, and um which are right, two good examples, and uh just unbelievable, when you really think about it. Um talk about, we've talked about, and I've heard a lot about the pride in Sycamore and our community, but I think this is just one example uh of how you see that in a tangible way, you know, that those groups working together, so. Just seemed to make sense to highlight that, that's my.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that uh this is one of the things that makes uh the community of Sycamore a special place. Um it gives it its flavor and its atmosphere, is this cooperation and this uh drive towards partnership, and this, this um understanding on the part of um people who live here, uh of how important education is, and, and what kind of pathways education can open up for, uh for students, um for our children. And, and uh in doing so, will benefit the community as well, so uh it, 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 that's a unique combination. And uh I often, when I speak to graduates, talk about the fact that um, you know, they're lucky to live in such a place, because not all places are like this. And so um this really serves to help highlight the fact that, yes, this really is, this really is a special, a special place, and a special connection that we have with uh everyone really, you know, pulling together at, at the same time. Um sometimes we get a little out of, a little out of rhythm, but uh we always seem to be able to, to come back and then, so.
Same here.
Yeah, I mean, we should probably continue to work on this list and, and keep it, and uh and just see how valuable that is to have the relationships out there, yeah. So thanks for bringing that, bringing that up, because we can forget about that if we don't think about it.
That's all for Secret Committee's report.
Okay. Um open discussion and future agenda items?
I think um we should take a minute and look at the West School staff that's here, and ask how many of them are graduates of Sycamore High School. And I feel tremendous pride to say that there's a lot of them, and um it's pretty exciting. I think that speaks volumes about this community. So not that one of them's my son or, or my.
I'm glad you said that, because I was just gonna say.
Steve, do we have a, a designated role in the district that's in charge of these community relationships, community outreach?
We don't. You know, that falls uh in a variety of, of places in terms of responsibility. It's part of, of my role, part of, I think, the building principals' roles, is developing those. Um Communications Department for sure. Um you know, I think Jim's point is a really good one. We should probably try to put a list like this together. Because when I talked to Kelly about this, we don't have a list like that. Uh oftentimes, where, you know, one of the locations you, you see a list like that is uh, you know, vacancy notice, especially when you're filling the superintendent position. So we went back three years when, um when I was hired, and um got some ideas from there, but there wasn't certainly an exhaustive list there. Um I, I think it's a great idea to s-, to start a list, and probably pretty quickly to start to, you know, FFA is a really good example. There are a lot of our partners who, who really support agriculture, um so maybe a complete list, as well of, uh as well as sectioning that off into, you know, FFA, um music boosters, you know, things of that nature, but. What's that? Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And I think, I think with SCF trying to put an emphasis on the alumni program, trying to build that finally, and having some tools and place to do that, they may not all be local, but they may still be part of the greater Sycamore community that West School can really.
Well, I, I, that's exactly what I was thinking of, and in just my couple of years here working with SCF, how many times somebody from outside of not just Sycamore, but the state, or the country, have gotten in touch with us uh directly, or with SCF, uh and have partnered with us, and um that list could get pretty long pretty quick, but that's a good thing. And I think to, to highlight that and, and to share that with the public is, is a really good thing.
Other uh open discussion items, issues or observations, questions? Future agenda items? Form what's up in stock? Um is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, or dismissal of personnel in imminent litigation?
So moved.
Second?
Moving second to roll call?
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, we'll uh take a moment to, to uh go into full session, and then we'll come back out for our final. Okay, we're back in open session. Uh is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, uh roll call?
Davy?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
There is a second, alright. All in favor? Alright, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.